Six.
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, the time is now six P M. I'd like to welcome you all to this meeting of the Granite Falls School District. Um, Board of General. Well, I'm sorry. Sergeant Willians, thank you, sir. That's what I told you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I'll hand it over to Ms. Geaslin for our land acknowledgement.
Thank you. Uh, we honor the first peoples of these lands by acknowledging that the area in which we gather is within the traditional territory of the Stillaglamish tribe of Indians. The Stillaglamish tribe, tribe, Stillaglamish people have inhabited these lands and waters since time immemorial, and their descendants have remained in this territory to this day. The Stillaglamish people have continued to practice the traditional ways of their ancestors of fishing, hunting, and gathering. The Stillaglamish tribe has had these lands and cultural traditions passed on to them by their ancestors who, who believe that everything has a spirit and that they are the caretakers of these lands and waters.
Thank you. Um, in today's meeting, we have Director Dane, Director Ladue, Director Carey, myself, Director Kukane, um, and our Superintendent Dana Geaslin.
I'd like to make a motion to excuse stress adopted.
What second?
Motion has been made in second and all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Uh, moving on to item number three A, uh, it looks like the certificated staff appreciation.
We just want to mention that last week was, um, across the state, certificated staff appreciation week, and many things were done at the building levels and we did a little something from the district level, but we sure appreciate all that I do, um, to lead our system and, and teach our kids and its teachers and our E S As. So our E S As, of course, are our counselors and nurses and occupational therapists and S L Ps and, um, I'm probably missing someone in there, but, um, especially to what they do each and every day to meet the needs of all of our kiddos and to move that needle forward. So special thank you to them.
Excellent. Uh, three B, board comments and reports. We'll start with Director Dane.
Um, I don't have anything important to me.
Okay.
That will have to do.
Director Ladue?
Yeah, um, so on the W I A side of the house, uh, Director Dane also informed me too as well, um, girls' flag football is officially brought in by the W I A. Um, so that could also be a fun, fun, fun thing to bring in. I know Superintendent Geaslin has been working on even potentially a golf team for us as well.
Go.
Uh, so that's all ago. Um, I think Battle Creek.
Yes.
Is, is going to be the golf course, so great, great location, um, and exciting opportunity for our kids to get out there and, you know, play some golf, spend some time with each other, basically hike and swing a balls. It's, it's, it's fun. It's why we do it throughout our life. Um, and then also, so we're part of our audit exit review today. Um, and this is quite candidly, I could say it's the first year in many years where there's no exit items to be taken from, from the audit, which for anybody that knows, that means that everything is clean in order where it's supposed to be. Um, it was great. It was a nice short meeting because there wasn't, there wasn't anything to really address outside of that. So, um, that's fantastic findings. Again, that's from the state auditor. Um, so that's a, that's a big piece for us.
And I think the findings will be available publicly.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, it'll be released, yes.
Yeah, so those will be released here shortly, but, uh, yeah, just all great news all around, so.
Um, I don't have anything for ledge, but just real quick on the auditors that, um, that's only possible through the hard work of staff and, um, our superintendent. So wonderful job. I think in my 12 years, I've only seen maybe once, um, early on where we had a clean audit. So great, great, great job. Um, I do have another statement, which is, um, and this is weird for me because I, I always speak off the top of my head, but this was really important to me, so I went to write it down and make sure I got everything out, um, and was able to, to really kind of go through my thoughts. Um, I want to share something that I'm probably most of you guys know in this room. I've decided to not run for another four-year term. Uh, over the past 12 years, I've had the privilege of helping work and guide our district to a more financially stable place. Helped work to recruit dynamic and passionate teachers and of course support the amazing educators and staff, um, that we have across our schools to the best of my ability. But honestly, I, and I mean this, I think my greatest accomplishment was being part of the team that brought Dana Geaslin into the superintendent role. Uh, this district is good and it's going to be great because Dana is without a doubt the hardest working superintendent I've ever had the pleasure to work with. Her commitment to doing what's best for kids, even when it's hard, even when it's not the popular thing is unmatched. Uh, she's exactly the leader we need and Dana, of course, has my full trust and support. I ask it, everyone in the district, give her the grace, understanding and backing she deserves. She continues leading this district forward. So just quick talk about why I, what led me to this decision, because I, I certainly want to be clear, transparent. Um, I've always had a guiding principle in my life. It's your children will become who you are, so be who you want them to be. Uh, the men I'm raising my sons to become are men who I want to care deeply about their community. I want them to stand up for those without a voice. I want them to be willing to do the work to make things better. I stepped up to serve on the board because I wanted my children to see that great communities don't just happen. They are built by people who show up, who listen, who work hard and who care. Democracy thrives with participation. Whenever my son starts something and want to quit, I always tell him, finish well, see the commitment through to the end. And after serving three terms, 12 years, I've come to recognize that with where my career and my life are heading, I can't confidently commit to another four years and I refuse to ask my community that I love and support to give their love and support and trust to me without knowing that I can hold up my side of the commitment. And this, there appears to be a lot of interest from others in our community to step up and serve on the board, which is an amazing thing. And I feel confident that I will leave the district in really good hands. Um, my time on the board has brought both joy and challenge, but every moment has deepened my love for this district and the people in it, and it's been truly an honor to serve. Um, before I conclude, I want to be vulnerable and about a challenge that even though I try not to let it, still breaks my heart. Social media and the impact it has on all of us. Um, too often I see on social media assumptions are made about the decisions made by the board or by others in the community. Details are shared that are incorrect, partially correct, but lack context. Conclusions are drawn based upon that incorrect information, positions are hardened, and everyone retreats to their corners. The cycle continues and it makes true dialogue more difficult with each round. I've always believed that local politics should represent the best of us because we live here, I live here. We raise our families here. The decisions we make affect our own neighbors. While I don't speak for the board, but I can assure you that everyone sits in these seats, has a primary goal to move the district forward with care, integrity, and a shared commitment to do what's best for students. So I ask if there's anything that you guys want to give me, I don't, I'm not looking for a party, I'm not looking for a plaque. I'm not looking at any celebration at all. If you want to honor me stepping up in this role, what I ask with the deepest respect is let's show our students and children who we want them to be. Ask questions, reach out, seek understanding before assuming negative intent. Contact your board member directly for context and clarity. Disagreeing is okay. If you, if, even after you do all that and you still disagree, I can live with that. But what I can't live is a cycle that continues, um, to break apart the circle and the culture of trust, grace and constructive dialogue that I would hope that we build. So thank you for the opportunity to serve. It's been truly an honor and I certainly will make sure that I finish well. Thank you.
I'll thank you, Carl. Thank you for all of your work. You built this and it's pretty amazing. So, thank you. Well, um, for my comments tonight, I just wanted to say like Carl kind of alluded to, there's a lot of things going around on social media, especially the last couple of days. There's a lot of mean and hateful things being said without context. So I have just a little something to, uh, read, um, kind of about that. Um, and so here we go. On behalf of the entire board, I want to begin by reaffirming something we all care deeply about, which is our Granite Falls community, especially the children and families who attend our schools. As in some previous years, this week included the very difficult task of reducing a small number of staff positions. These decisions are painful at every level and we recognize how much they impact our employees, their families, their colleagues, and our entire school community. There are many complexities to school budgeting, but perhaps the most impactful is enrollment. Predicting how many students will be with us in the fall and being cautious with the number of staffing contracts we commit to. If we are overstaffed, we simply do not have the funding to support all contractual obligations. We balance staffing to enrollment every year, and this year in particular, we have not seen the number of resignations and retirements that we typically do. Without those natural staffing changes, the need for formal reductions becomes more likely. Next year, we are forecasting 90 to 100 fewer students than this year. This enrollment decline is being driven by several factors. One is smaller kindergarten classes due to declining birth rates following COVID. The sunsetting of our agreement with Lake Stevens School District, through which we had served approximately 70 of their students at Crossroads High School, and a moratorium on new housing construction to Granite Falls, which has been in place for over two years. It was originally set to lift this May, but that has now been delayed. Once the moratorium is lifted, we do expect to see growth in our community and in time our student enrollment. This represents nearly 1 million less in enrollment-based revenue for the coming year. We want our staff and community to know that these decisions are not made lightly. We value every employee who serves Granite Falls students and we take seriously the effect these changes have on individuals and families. Our North Star remains unchanged, student learning and success. Our goal is to prepare our students for choice-filled lives, and that starts with our classrooms with the support of our amazing teachers and staff. Every decision we make is guided by that purpose and we remain focused on building a strong, sustainable future for all learners. Thank you for your continued partnership and commitment to public education here in Granite Falls. Thank you. Welcome. Moving on, uh, to item number four A, district reports, uh, business report prepared by Marshall Cruz.
I wasn't planning on presenting. It's, uh, pretty much based, uh, we're on track to make our five percent fund balance. Um, Peter talked about the audit, which was a fantastic audit. We had a lot of kudos for being one of the few districts that are navigating these troubled waters well. Um, and just, um, there is a item further on the board agenda about a budget extension for capital projects. We applied for a large grant, um, to redo our HVAC system and that'll flow through capital projects. It will be our money, it'll be state money, and we're hoping we hear from it, hear about it by Friday, but I had to get it into the board packet at this time, so that's coming.
I will also just, uh, to build upon the audit as well, I think most of us that were in that room learned, at least myself, Bill, even Dana, uh, learned actually a rather alarming best practice that most districts, in fact, I think out of what 295 districts in the, in the state, I think only two are, are meeting right now, and that's cash on hand. So I refer fund balance, right? And that's basically if, if funding stopped for some reason, what's the cash available on hand? Uh, currently with about, you know, 5% projected, it's 12 days of cash on hand that we have for the district. I want everybody to have that sink in. The school can operate for 12 days if funding for some reason was no longer coming in. The best practice is 60 days. Like I said, two school districts in the state have that. And so when we are continuing to, and I know Director Carey has, has driven this, he bless his heart, he brings it up to, you know, Marshall, every time one of these financial reports comes up. 5%, I know that's been the number that's been driven in, but you know, we're tracking towards 5.2 and that's 12 days. That's a little bit over two, it's not even two and a half school weeks, right? That's not a lot, right? And so I, I really cannot stress enough when, right? We're not trying to be complete penny pinchers or misers up here. The intent is really, how can we be financially solvent, right? If, in your own home finances, I don't think anybody would be comfortable with only having enough money to live for 12 days. Right? And this is a district that is, you know, 25, 2600 plus people rely upon this district. Um, so it's just, I, I really want to nail that home because I was shocked hearing that the best practice is 60 days.
Yeah.
That represents like an 18% fund balance, which most districts, you know, 99% of them are nowhere near that. Um, so it's just a, a state of financial struggle across the entire state. Um, and again, you know, Carl mentioned it beautifully as well too, like we can disagree, we can understand each other. Please reach out to us. School finance is, yeah, I mentioned that I think two or three board meetings ago too, but it's like there's specific buckets where you can pay for certain things. Money just, you know, we are, we're, we're a community, we're a house basically that are trying to make payments on things. And sometimes the money is not there unless we make difficult decisions. Um, and so we're more than happy, I'm more than happy, you know, email, people do it at Granite Falls. Um, you know, more than happy to sit down and chat because if there are any blind spots that we happen to have, I would love, 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 love to hear any feedback, any information. Maybe I can provide some additional context that may not be there for you. And maybe, again, maybe we do have blind spots that we're not seeing, but we would be more than happy to address those and work together to make sure that we're in a better place here going forward. So.
Thank you.
Yeah. Any other comment? Um, moving on to. Hold on.
Three B.
Three B.
Oh, wait, no, I'm sorry.
No, where am I?
Four B.
Four B, sorry. I closed the window on accident. Um, item number four B, the superintendent report.
Thank you. All right, we'll go ahead and get started. Oh, okay. We just cleared it. Just, oh, oh, yep. I think we're good. It buzzed at me. That was very odd. All right, um, just some, uh, quick highlights. Uh, district facilities and safety. So huge thank you to our maintenance team, uh, Nicolai and Elian especially. Um, all outdoor lighting across the, the district has been upgraded. That, that is really, it's bigger than we're probably letting on because it's just, you know, it, the lights are better now. They're LED lights, they're brighter, they're more energy efficient, longer lasting, all of those things. But, um, that gives us better access and people can see when they're going out to cars and those kinds of things. This time of year it's not a severe thing, but in the, in the, in the dead of winter, it really, it really makes such a difference. So thank you. Many in, in the district saw them out and about, um, on the big genie that we have that takes them up there. So huge work. Um, secondly, something we're super excited about and, um, I just, a huge shout out to Allison King. She came to meet with Marshall and I and just said, gosh, I'd really like to see if we can get an AED, um, on the playfields. And, um, as you all know, the, the quicker someone goes into cardiac arrest, Bill especially knows this, that's just, that's our chief. Um, if we can get, you know, treatment to them and an AED right away, it just makes all the difference in the world. So Allison came to us, we said, yes, that would be great. And, um, we are now working with Project 100 and we met with them at another meeting. Bottom line, it's going to be installed May 22nd. We'll have many that are in this room at that ribbon cutting ceremony. The AED, it looks something like that and it's, it's going to be out there, um, just for that quick response. All of the, the AED and the safe station have all been donated. Um, Granite Falls Fire will be there, um, grilling hot dogs and we're going to have a little, little to do if we can find a big, big pair of scissors. I don't know if Marshall can ever secure those yet, but just thank you to everybody who made that possible. That is, um, really exciting. And then we'll register it on Pulse Point, which, um, means that everybody who goes to that app, you can see where there's AEDs in the area. And, um, we're just really excited about that. It's, it's a huge thing. Um, lastly, we, Marshall and I met with Milig. Um, they came to us. I think we had a meeting with them in January. They did the walkthroughs, the in-kind walkthroughs across our whole system. Um, there are lots of needs. There's, there's many, many things, um, because they kind of looked in every nook and cranny. And then there's a lot of opportunities for some possible energy efficient moves that we can do, some immediate and long-term needs. We'll get that report to you all, um, and maybe have them at a study session, come in front of us and kind of list out some things. Um, noteworthy, just the energy use at each of our buildings and the fact that, um, Monte Cristo and Mountain Way, the way the HVAC systems work there and things are using the same amount of energy as a Granite Falls High School, which obviously is a much bigger building, has stadium lighting, all of the things. So we have some, some energy, um, some high energy use buildings. I almost said that they're energy suckers, but that sounds terrible, but the truth is those buildings are not efficient and it's costing us money. So we have some work to do, but we're really excited. They've been, um, a nice partner in that. So, um, some next steps there. All right. I have some things in this, the audit, but I think we probably, we talked about that a little bit. And thank you to both of the directors who are there. Um, I just want to give it a huge shout out to Marshall and, um, Morgan, who really just responded. When auditors are in, in your system, you're, you're, you're kind of on pins and needles because they can, they could ask for a number of things and they were able to provide all the things that we needed. I think the next audit will involve, um, federal special education, so we'll be ready for that. Um, and all of the things from previous audits have been corrected. They're no longer an issue. Um, and the district was highly committed for the fiscal stewardship and that has worked over the last several years. So thank you, Marshall, and your team and everybody who contributed to that. And a special shout out to Lynn, um, our child nutrition supervisor, because that was audited this year and she did such a nice job of giving the auditors everything they needed to, um, to review. So thank you to everyone who helped make that happen. Um, I know Carly, you, you mentioned this a little bit, um, just the reduction in force, um, that we had to engage in. And if, if a, a staff member is reduced, um, there's always the possibility that, you know, we could, especially the two teachers that were reduced this week, that was, um, never where we want to be as a system. We'd like to be growing as a system and we will be, uh, soon. Um, but we do have those declining birth rates that you mentioned, that sunsetting agreement. Um, the enrollment continues to decline a little bit. Um, it was a different number on, from our April 1st, um, student count. We have 50, almost 60 fewer students, um, than we did in November. So we're, we continue to operate on contracts that we've agreed to. So this year it gets a little bit harder to kind of make ends meet. Again, we have a fewer resignations and retirements. Um, the board did approve the, the RIF resolution. Um, and it was 10 certificated staff, 10 classified, one administrator. As of this week, um, we got that down to just two certificated staff members and one administrator. Um, and we will be posting that ALE program manager, um, reframing that a little bit. That's obviously our ALE programs are going to be a lot less students. And then we'd like to look at some other options too, um, maybe a homeschool partnership down the road. Um, we have several people in the community who are homeschool and we, we want to be a good partner with them also. So there's, there's some other opportunities that, that some things some other districts are doing. We don't have any classified staff reductions, um, right now. Um, there could be a few things there. Um, that's kind of the next thing to look at as we continue to, um, assess our fiscal, um, projections for next year. Teaching and learning, Emily.
Good evening. Uh, just a couple of updates. Um, in the thick of it, the end of the year evaluations, um, those conferences are underway across the district. So huge thank you to our certificated staff and our classified staff. We're working through those in our building principals. Uh, we are starting to get back our SBA scores, which, um, that they're starting to trickle in and we're taking a look at that growth. Special thank you to Dan Scholar and our technology team. We've been working together all year, conducting an inventory of our digital platforms and resources, um, to look for any places of redundancy and any potential cost savings. Uh, got great news just a couple, a couple, uh, weeks ago from, um, OSPI, that our OSPI grant for open doors has been awarded, which is great. We still await any news about the crossroad side of that conversation. Uh, on May 28th, uh, if all goes well, uh, we will be bringing an adoption recommendation to you around the 612 E L A adoption and, uh, we'll talk through that with you when that comes. Um, and then we are approximately three quarters of the way through our S V A and W tests, our science testing. And I just want to give a huge shout out to our building principals and our building testing coordinators. It's, it's a heavy lift. Um, and, um, the coordinators and the building principals do that hard work. And then of course to our teaching staff who deliver, uh, tests and Proctor tests and all the people that do one-on-one scribing and all of those services. It is a heavy lift every year and just want to send a great big thank you to all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, some upcoming district and community events, this is not an inclusive list. Please, uh, make sure you, you know, follow our website and, and the school websites and those kinds of things. We do have tomorrow night, Night of the Arts, uh, Granite Falls High School Commons, 5 to 7 P M. I tried to catch the first part of this and then I, Emily and I were both heading to a Housing Hope fundraiser that we committed to long before. That we knew that the night of the arts, it's just a busy night. Um, and then the AED Safe Station, um, board meeting on the 28th. Uh, Bridge Builder and Success in Education Awards are going to be at that, um, at that board meeting. And that again is at Granite Falls High School Forming Arts Center. Our graduation events, those are just a few of them. There's many other things happening as well. And then the graduation ceremonies that we have coming up, and it's just the culmination of so many years of hard work for all of our kids and, um, and all of our staff too. So looking forward to celebrating our graduates.
I'll also add, uh, Monte Cristo has their choir concert tomorrow night as well. So, um, there's a third, fourth, and then fourth, fifth, uh, choir concert tomorrow evening, so.
What time does that start, Director Ladue?
Uh.
Six?
I think it's six. I'd have to double check, but, um, but yeah, definitely there will be, because there's two different, two different groups, the three, four, four, five. Um, but yeah, so. Uh, I believe so. I'd have to double check.
Apologies, I wasn't in my calendar.
I know, no, but that, that'll be fun. If you want to see some, some little ones belt their heart out. I believe one of the songs is I'm Still Standing by El Jefe.
It's not.
Yes.
Instead I'll be eating some bad Mediterranean chicken. I'm not kidding. It's been that for like the last three years, I think, right, Emily? All right. Um, moving on, our next, um, item, um, that I know we're going to do in a minute, the, the C T management review. But before we get to that, um, I wanted to say that we have our WASA awards coming up and, um, at our, I know that J V J is going to kill me for doing this, so if he starts shooting me daggers, then, uh, you know, we're just going to deal with it. It's fine. We are honoring our community partner, um, the library and the amazing work they do to partner with us and bring collections in. So huge thank you to them. But I thought that tonight I would read, um, the speech that is going to be read at the WASA awards to honor J V J, who's been selected for this award. Um, he is amazing, as you all know. Um, and I want to just talk about him for a second. All right, here we go. Um, this will be on Friday. We'll be recognizing him. Today we'd like to recognize someone who truly embodies the heart, hands, and hope of education in the Granite Falls School District, Mr. Joshua Vins. Or as he's known around town, J V J. Or as our students affectionately call him, Mr. J V J. J V J is the kind of educator whose impact is immediate and lasting. He splits his time between Granite Falls Middle School and Granite Falls High School, and no matter where he is, students flock to his classes. He is that teacher. The one that kids remember years later, the one that they request, the one whose classroom becomes a second home. Last summer, when we asked him to revive a long dormant manufacturing and construction program at the high school, he didn't flinch. The shop space had been unused for three years and left in complete disarray by various one-off projects. It was cluttered, neglected, and hardly a place of learning. But in true J V J fashion, he saw potential and he got to work. He scrubbed, sorted, repaired, reimagined, and rebuilt. It was like extreme, extreme makeover shop edition. And by fall, that space had become what is, what it was always meant to be, a vibrant, hands-on learning environment where students create, build, and take pride in their work. What's happening in his classroom every single day is nothing short of magic. But J V J's impact doesn't stop at the shop doors. Driving to Granite Falls during any season and you'll likely be greeted by a community display built in partnership with his middle school students from Frightening Falls at Halloween to Gravy Falls at Thanksgiving to Granite Flalalalas. Someone will have to read that on Friday. During, I gave the, a heads up that they would have to read that. During the holidays and Granite Falling in Love in February. These displays are clever, joyful, and beloved by everyone, especially visitors heading toward the mountain loop. He's a constant presence at community events, always building something that adds beauty, pride, or fun to the occasion. When we launched our Bridge Builder Staff Awards, J V J created and engraved wooden bridges in an incredible hand-painted backdrop for photos. And somehow every time we say, it's really me, so I'm going to own this, hey, J V J, I have an idea. Do you think you could pull it off? His answer is always yes. Yes for students, yes for staff, yes for community, yes because he believes in what's possible and helps others believe it too. Today, our Friday, um, it's our honor to present the WASA award to Josh Van Jensen, an extraordinary educator, a generous teammate, and a true builder in every sense of the word. Congratulations, J V J. You make Granite Falls and all of us proud. Okay, I turn it back over to you.
Gravy Falls is my favorite. Um, so coming up next is, uh, item number four C, which is, uh, the C T management review presented by Josh Vins.
Yes, I do.
I was told you would advance my slides.
Before J V J starts, a huge thank you to him and Candice Ward, our assistant principal at the middle school. They have done so much work this, this year in C T to really, um, unearth some things and figure things out and get things together. I don't, I just don't think that we could have done the management review and got as much information, um, as we, as we have been able to. So thank you for your countless hours and working on this and working with staff because everybody wants to do what's right. Everybody wants to serve kids. We just need to do it in the ways that the funds and the, and the program is intended. And so J V J is going to synthesize kind of the findings and the recommendations from, from WASA, and then we'll make that happen.
Thank you. Well, Dana stole my introduction. Um, I'm J V J. Uh, I teach middle school and high school. I'm J B J. Uh, I teach middle school and high school. I focus construction and manufacturing technology. Uh, I'm currently wrapping up my master's degree and my C T administrator certification through Eastern Washington University. Uh, as of tonight, I have thirty-seven and three-quarter days left, uh, until my two-year program is completed. Uh, but who's counting? Um, I am desperately waiting to get my life back. Uh, the facilitation of the WASA review and the presentation tonight and some of the planning that we're doing uh related to this is my capstone project. So it's kind of summarizing all stuff that I've been working on the last couple of years. Um, and that's what we're presenting, so presenting tonight. Uh, before we dive in, I I do want to clarify, we're sharing findings and recommendations of an outside third party. Uh, the findings that are being shared tonight are not my opinions, they're not Candace's opinions, they're not Dana's opinions. Uh, they are the findings of a very uh experienced and very capable group of people that look at and provide usable feedback for growth uh and change within C T departments. Uh, and they've done this all across the state um in a number of different areas, number of sizes of districts. Um, as as we continue to work towards stabilizing and improving C T E, I would encourage everyone here tonight to give each of these findings and recommendations uh serious consideration, um, even the ones that are more challenging. As we get started, if you have questions, uh, feel free to ask uh at any time. Uh, we also have a little bit of time at the end for questions. Uh, first slide here, uh, just real quick introduction, um. Do I, Dana, you have to move it forward? Okay, thanks. I see how the clicker works. I don't want to, I don't want to deal with it. Um. WASA, so the Washington Association of School Administrators, was invited to conduct uh this management review of C T E. Uh, we kind of started talking about this in early twenty twenty-four, uh, the start of the school years when we kind of began this conversation. The purpose of it was to evaluate the effectiveness and structure of staffing enrollment uh in compliance within C T E. Uh, this really started in earnest on March of twenty twenty-five, uh, with the final report delivered at the end of April. Um, this was prepared by the WASA consultants, uh, Jake Copper and Richard Follett. Jake is a assistant superintendent in Yakima for finance. And Richard is a C T director in Prosser. So lots of on-the-ground experience with this. Uh, the overview of the process, the documents that they reviewed, that we were providing them, and uh, the staff and people that we interviewed is on page six and seven of your report. Uh, next slide. The purpose of the review was to assess uh the current effectiveness of our C T programs, determining student utilization of C T course offerings and graduation pathways, evaluating building district and community support for C T E, and comparing uh our C T programs to similarly sized districts in Washington. So kind of looking at some comparisons. Uh, next slide. First area of focus and findings uh was our C T leadership and structure. Uh, the findings in this first area were with frequent turnover in the director role. Uh, this created inconsistency in direction and compliance for our program as a whole. Uh, inevitably, there's gaps in um leadership transition. Um, anytime we see transition, we see things get dropped. Uh, when that happens again and again and again, over the course of seven years, you get five or six people running that program, uh, there's drops. Um, and so many of the concerns that are found within this report uh can be solved by having consistent and qualified leadership overseeing the program. So that's a main area of finding. Uh, the recommendations for this were to hire a part-time C T director with direct experience, uh, encouraging membership in the Washington Association of Current Technical Administrators, um, and that the director should collaborate regularly with the business office. So finding and recommendations, that's what the next few slides are. Um, any questions on this stuff?
No.
No, okay. Uh, next slide. Uh, staffing and enrollment and budget. Uh, the findings here were that uh our C T enrollment has declined year over year, uh, leading to an approximate seven hundred thousand dollar loss of revenue uh just within the C T department between the middle school and the high school. Uh, this means that our current staffing may exceed enrollment-driven funding uh within C T E. Um, review data indicates that C T E is under-enrolled and overstaffed. Um, so our recommendations here uh for this point is that we would align staffing to enrollment and student interest data uh to make sure that the courses that we're offering um are relevant to students and relevant to local uh needs as a C T E program. Uh, it's recommended that the district staff within the resources of C T E program funds, so that we are matching uh our staffing with our enrollment, uh, and then using advisory committees to review workforce data and approve course offerings. So that's looking at our future planning and our future processes associated with what we offer and how we offer it to students. Any questions? Okay. I just don't want to ask and then somebody's like, I actually have a question. All right, slide number, uh, next slide here, uh, graduation pathways and course approval. The findings in this section were that seventy percent of our students are using a C T graduation pathway. So we have a lot of uh use of C T E as a means for students to graduate um and make it to their time in high school. Uh, we also found that some past courses have lacked O S P I approval. So we've been running courses in a couple of places that uh did not have the appropriate approval, uh, which is of course a significant issue for us uh and one that has been uh corrected and will continue to stay corrected moving forward. Recommendations here were that uh course development and approval is overseen by the C T director. And that all C T courses are O S P I approved. Uh, the recommendation here is that we would also follow our O S P I approval calendar, which is uh April fifteenth and October fifteenth. Uh, which is when we have to have courses submitted for next year. So that that date just passed. So when we're looking for twenty-five, twenty-six, uh, we've already submitted those courses that we are looking to run uh in the fall. We want to add something else. If we're all of a sudden, we say, oh, we actually do want to add a course, we can still submit it. They may get to it. Uh, but the likelihood is you're not going to be able to run that till second semester. So it's it's a mechanism that prevents us from just kind of making things up quickly. It should show intentionality and development in um these courses. Um. The last one there is uh reinstating the construction manufacturing program uh based on student interest, skills gap data, and community support, which as we have discussed, has is moving uh in the right direction, uh, is moving um in the way that we have wanted it to move for uh several years. Any questions on that?
I have questions, but I'll wait until you get through to make sure that you don't answer my question.
That's good. Okay, um. Works as well. Uh, number six, certification and compliance. Uh, the findings were that we had a high number of conditional certifications on conditionals being renewed uh multiple times. Uh, there's been a historical practice in the district of uh multiple renewals on conditionals, uh, which is not best practice. Uh, when you look at uh C T practices and and what is determined to be the right way to do things, uh, that is not a best practice for conditionals. Uh, we need to be working as quickly as possible to get teachers off conditionals. Uh, that is a really significant uh measure of the strength of a program is how quickly and how many teachers we have moving from conditionals into initial certifications. Recommendations here are requiring uh timely progress towards full certification. Uh, we're not just leaving people on a conditional. Uh, we want to monitor and limit time on conditional, uh, the certification limit there. Uh, page five has some details about that, but uh it's initially a two-year um conditional through O S P I, and then you can renew it if certain criteria are met and followed as we do that. Uh, we want to align our SIP codes and V codes. If you, if you don't know what a SIP code is, uh, it's stands for classification of instructional programs. It's how we classify our courses uh that we would say a culinary class has a SIP code that's different than an instruction class, and it just says what it is. Uh, those pair up with vocational codes or V codes, which determine what a teacher can and cannot teach. So I have a V code in construction and manufacturing technology. I can teach courses paired with that V code in that SIP code. I cannot teach a culinary course, um, no matter how good I think I am at culinary. I can't teach culinary course. I don't have a a V code for it. Now, if there's a woodworking culinary course, um, you you have to line these up. And so uh, using conditionals is necessary for C T E programs, um, very necessary for C T programs. But the structure and intent of the conditional must be maintained. Uh, these are a vital tool for us to bring teachers into or bring people into teaching from industry. It allows us to recruit people from industry-specific jobs to find someone and say, come and teach. It gives us some time where we can get them certified, um, get them the right training and a support classroom instruction techniques, um, so that they can be an effective teacher with that really strong industry base. Um. Allowing a teacher to be conditionally certified without a full assurance that they are going to be able to get that initial certification is not best practice. Um, that is a disservice to um everybody involved. Uh, we we happened in my program at Central, there were teachers that were going through that program, and they get to the end of it. They pay all the money for the central program, they apply to O S P I, O S P I says you don't have the hours. You should have checked this before and no certification. So it it we really have to make sure that we are using that in the correct way. It's a, it's a tool to be used. Uh, and since I am a big fan of tools, uh, the illusion there is that you can use tools incorrectly. Uh, that doesn't mean it's a bad tool. It means it's just not being used in the way it should be used. Um. That was not my joke, actually. I had one at the beginning. Thank you. I'm incredible here in, that's my middle school. Uh, next one here, uh, community support and advisory committees. Uh, the report found that we have strong community support for our C T programs. Um, and we have advisory committees that are uh engaged and knowledgeable in what we are doing. Uh, the recommendation here is that we maintain regular meetings and expand our advisory committees. Uh, using advisory committees for input for curriculum, equipment, uh, and facilities planning. Um, and then increasing involvement of advisory planning in the future. We've done a lot of work in this area. Uh, this, this was a significant area of growth for us this year. Uh, in in improving advisories, we have a lot of work to do on advisories. Uh, but advisories are essential to what we do. Uh, they are essential to how a C T program should operate, and they are an essential marker of a high-quality C T program. That means that we have industry people who know this stuff, uh, that are currently in industry, that are advising us of the work that we are doing and where to make changes and current trends. Um, it, I think about my manufacturing and construction advisory, got a really great group of uh local tradespeople. Uh, one of them, Greg Mackey, who uh has been a vital support for me, um, serves on my advisory committee. He's got a student in the district. Uh, him and this group of local tradespeople uh are giving us direction and advice and support. They come and help clean out the shop. They come and help uh do dump runs for us. They are advising us on what we are doing and how we are doing it. Uh, they're our first line of support for us in making sure that what I'm teaching lines up with what is actually happening in industry right now. Um, and that that is a vital support. It makes it so we're not uh just doing our own thing. Um, so we've done a lot of work and we will continue to do more work on this because it is is one of the most important things we can do uh to make sure that our C T programs are healthy and moving in the right direction. Next slide here. Our peer district comparisons, um, C T program spending, so a percent of B E A uh is about seven percent, which is pretty close to the state average. That means we're kind of trending in in the way most districts are when it comes to how much C T E we are offering in comparison to our other programs. Uh, but the problem here is our F T E and our course enrollment are lagging behind. That means uh that we have declining C T E enrollment equals decreased revenue uh and minimal financial carryover year over year. Uh, declining, this is a direct quote from page thirteen, it says declining enrollment is directly tied to under-enrolled classes. Under-enrolled classes do not produce enough revenue to necessitate they continue to be offered. Um, this decrease in revenue um means that we don't have carryover, which means that it is very hard for us to long-term plan for our programs. It's very hard for us to long-term plan and say, we want to spend more money on the healthcare pathway because it's a growing area. We're going to have to put some investment in here when we have nothing to carry over. And so these are, these are things that are very important for us moving forward. Um. The recommendation here is investigating these causes, redesigning offerings around high-interest areas and high demand and high-skill programs. Next slide, uh, this is about high-interest areas and credit options. Uh, the findings here were that health science and construction were identified as uh pretty significant student interests. Uh, when they talked to the counselors at the high school, uh, this was a consistent area that we're seeing coming up again and again uh as top choices, healthcare and um construction. Uh, recommendations here, these are just some techniques that we are going to continue to explore and utilize more fully uh to increase uh our enrollment in C T E. Exploring cross-credit opportunities, so looking at C T dual-credit college and high school. The example that they provide there is that financial uh fitness could articulate with a Central Washington course that could provide five college credits. Uh, these cross-credit and dual-credit opportunities can increase C T enrollment, which can help us uh strengthen our programs as we move forward. Okay, next one. Key takeaways here, if we look at kind of the whole thing here. Uh, we want to prioritize the development of a clear district-wide vision and plan for C T E. Um. When a student steps through the door, their first day of kindergarten, uh, from the moment they walk across the stage, uh, their graduation, uh, we need to have a thought and a plan for how we expose uh career technical elements to them every step of the way. Not just middle school where we get the money, not just high school where it really starts to get real, uh, but second graders and third graders. Uh, we've been working with Stacy Simmons at the elementary school. Uh, we were providing and giving uh them opportunities to use uh some tools and they were getting to kind of do some hands-on stuff around construction, right? So the second grade version of construction. Um, which, when she told me about this, it felt very similar to a middle school and high school version of us of uh kids hands-on and working. Uh, so trying to support and develop that district-wide plan for C T, it's not just middle school, it's not just high school. Um. Connecting middle school exposure to high school pathways and post-secondary options, we've been talking about that for a number of years. Uh, we've been working on that, making sure that a course they take in middle school leads them to something, not that they, this is what motivated a lot of the stuff with construction. We're sending kids up, get them excited about working in the shop, and there's no shop to work in. So making sure that we have those pathways uh articulated across all of our schools. Um, the next one is communicating vision clearly to staff, students, and families. This is an area where uh, as we've had so much transition in the leadership role, uh, it's just meant that um we don't have a vision to communicate uh besides trying to keep the wheels from falling off. And so we want to have a good, clear vision to communicate, using that as a foundation for planning recruitment and student engagement. Uh, next slide. This is some uh next step planning. Uh, spring of twenty twenty-five, uh, hiring a part-time C T director or coordinator, uh submitting O S P I course approvals by April fifteenth and October fifteenth, um, as we're moving through that. Analyze staffing and enrollment alignment, and then convene our advisory committees for twenty-five, twenty-six planning. Another quote there from the report, the advisory committee structure is an essential link between community and schools that must be continually utilized. So we are going to lean uh as heavy into that as we can uh because it is a essential aspect of what we do and how we do it. Uh, next slide, uh, launching and expanding high-interest and high-demand courses and pathways. Again, health science has has come up again and again, both from a student interest and also a skills gap perspective in Snoomish County. This is an area that um they are looking and saying, we need more people in this profession. That needs to be what drives our expansion of our C T E programs. Uh, monitoring certification progress for all C T E staff, expanding those articulated and dual-credit options, uh, and then regular reporting on enrollment and budget health. Next slide, our conclusion here, uh, is this review affirms a strong potential to revitalize uh C T E within the school district. Key ingredients here would be stable leadership, strong community partnerships, attention to compliance, student-centered and skills-gap-based course offerings, and then a commitment to career readiness and opportunity for all uh G F S D students. When we were sitting with the reviewers and we're halfway through and uh kind of asked them like, how's this going? Like, what are you? How bad is it? And they're like, we've seen way worse. Uh, so it was encouraging. Uh, so that confirms that, that we we have the things in place and we have the opportunity to revitalize uh and strengthen C T within our district. Questions?
Yeah, uh, so you you called it out there at the end there. So strong interest uh for construction, but also health science. Do we have, like, when I'm looking, since there are sixteen different career clusters within C T E, um, is it like, i- is the strong interest from like a state perspect, or a county perspective where they're saying we need more or from students and families? And then is there like, is it like ten percent of the students and they're they're pretty well spread out throughout the different clusters of where they want to go? Is there like fifty percent of students want to do construction and health science?
The the general, and and I can, we can get a little more deep on those numbers. Um. We generally base this off what's called skills gap data, which is provided to us on the county level
Okay.
uh, through the E S D, so the Employment Security Department. Uh, and they give us uh, grow, kind of this every year, and it shows, you know, occupation groups that are in most need of people, and right now, construction. Uh, the top ones are construction, business and financial operations, which we have. Um, we have a lot of business and and uh, financial C T courses. We have, we have a lot of those. Installation installation and maintenance, sales, healthcare, production, education, training, computer and mathematical occupations, architecture. So it starts, it gets, you know, bigger and smaller. Um, so that's, that's a primary driver of it because it it needs to be local.
Yeah.
We're not looking to try to create skills gap jobs for uh the eastern half of the United States. Like, we're trying to really focus it here because that's where advisor numbers on enrollment, I don't have offhand.
No, and that's why, I mean, it it also helps guide the students towards like, hey, this is a career opportunity that has or will potentially have a lot of openings. Um, the other question that I had is, so within like the sixteen clusters, Right, so obviously, offering what students are most likely to want to enroll in as well, or what's, what's the largest need out there? What's sort of the, the break-even to make it economically feasible to offer courses? Because like, as I looked through, like, it'd be to offer all sixteen, right? But like, is it that we need at least thirty students enrolled within each cluster? Sort of, or having an interest for health science or agricultural, you know, food and natural resources? Like, what does that kind of look like, and how do we best evaluate that?
Yeah, I, I think there is, there's obviously numbers, there's financial drivers for what a class should run. We can say this is financially viable. We also would look at, you know, student interest is not, sometimes student interest cannot always be the exact driver of a job offering or of a CTE course. So there, there can be some areas there where we'd want to back it up with advisory. So our advisory committees are helping support that. Then I think a lot of it's vision casting for what our CTE programs are gonna do, we can't do everything. Can't do, we're a small district, we can't do good CTE in every path, in every cluster. So we're gonna have to focus where our local needs are, student interest. It's, it's kind of, it feels a little bit like a secret sauce, like trying to get, like, how do we manage this? It's, some of it's based on who we have and skills available in the teaching area. So what we can and can't teach, and then looking at what options we have to expand. Or I don't know if you want to add anything to that?
No, I mean, and just in addition with us in this area, the big thing is, is with getting construction off the ground for next year, which we have focused on with our grant writing, with everything to be able to, because we don't have the carryover. We have to be very strategic to the grants are out there. This year, there was a lot of grants for construction, so I was able to write in all that direction. Next year, the goal is, from going from this, is looking at healthcare, which was something that I looked at at the beginning of the year. JPJ and I talked about it, because it is a high-demand need in our area. It's something that advisors are stating, but it's something that we're funneling our kids off. They're going to Everett Community College, but they're not ready for UDEP's nursing program. So to keep them in-house and be able to help them gain more skills, we do have qualified staff that could branch us into that healthcare, and our kids could leave here with certifications like CNA. So, you know, a nurse's assistant with jobs that they can do while they're nursing. So that's kind of how we have to look at it, where the, where the grants are, and then that until we can get more solvent that we can get that carryover, so a CTE fund balance, if that's what you want.
Yeah, no, that, that makes sense, and because, I mean, ideally, right, ideally, we would like to, yeah, I guess I was looking around, like, how many of these could we could we offer without one, like, one or two falling grossly off? And, and, you know, it just, it not working out, and then hindering other programs as well. And, but I think health science definitely, I mean, I've been part of the senior exit interviews for the past several years. And I have several people each year that come through and are like, you can tell they have a real passion for healthcare, but they just don't know where to go with it. And so something like that would really be helpful to, you know, introduce these skills in high school. So then even if it's going to, you know, Everett Community College or something, right, at least there's, there's that background, right? If they, if, if, you know, Snow Isle is too daunting of a task for them to, you know, try to go through that path, you know, we can offer that here as well. So I think that's great.
I have some questions too. Sleep presentation, really appreciate it. I, I have some questions, and I guess I, I don't know why, but I felt like I need to preface this. The question here to, to make anyone feel negative or shine anyone a negative light. I just, I, I guess I'm scratching my head a little bit as I'm looking at some of the data. Because I guess I'm not really sure where the train went off the track, right? Because I, I remember very vividly, you know, talking to the community about the steam building at the middle school, and talking about all the CTE that we were going to be able to do and all of this stuff. And, and without a doubt, everything's been said is true. You've had a lot of turnover in, in leadership and CTE and stuff like that. But I guess I don't get, just asking so I can understand, how, how, how are CTE classes related to CTE pathway setup? And, and because I guess what I'm, what I'm struggling to understand is, is how, like, if a CTE class is proposed, right? And you have three students sign up for it, and it will husband journey, right? There's something along those things, right? And you have three people sign up for it. Clearly, that class can't sustain itself financially. So I would imagine that somewhere in the program, they're like, yeah, I'm sorry, you can't do that. So how do we have a, how do we have a situation where we have classes that are under-enrolled? Basically not funding themselves, but are allowed to kind of move forward.
Great question, do you want to tackle it, or? We've, we've talked about this too, yeah.
It's, the hard part is, is that we have been going on. Some of it is teacher desire, what to teach, and, or what staffing we have. So, and then students not having that interest in those classes anymore. So then we get less and less students. We also have salaries increased significantly, so that's where our balance, we have to raise the number of students in the class to be able to match the salary. So what, the ultimate number for CTE used to be seventeen, now we're saying twenty-five is what Washington CTE says for a class. We're needing like close to third, to be able to fund those with the raised salary. So it's just kind of this weird thing. The big thing is, is just not having the, the staff that could teach some of the areas, and so that's what we're looking at for. That we had some, with serving kids going to serving programs in different schools, we lose CTE numbers, right? So Snow Isles gained a lot of our kids because we didn't offer what they wanted, so bringing that back home. And starting to look at the stronger pathways will, we think in time, increase those numbers and grow our CTE. And which we can trickle down to the middle school, because then we can, we can start to build those up. So that, you know, that healthcare, maybe they're just terminal, like in middle school. Construction, we already have that, and starting to make it stronger pathways so that kids can see, which high school beyond say from seventh to twelve, so.
Got it, okay. So, I guess, in layman's terms, so the change with, or the, the desire change with having a CTE director in that regard is working with the advisory team. They're, they're going to help develop pathways and classes aligned with that, that will get the interest so that it's funded itself, is that?
So what they're, what they're recommending is somebody that is, somebody, yes. But what they're also recommending is somebody that part of their day is assigned to CTE, so they have the time. Right now, I work two jobs, right? So I'm at work, I'm usually the only car in the parking lot at seven o'clock, because I'm doing CTE stuff. But I'm doing CTE, so what they're recommending is having somebody that could have that time in their day to make those community connections, to make that. Not a lot of community members pick up the phone at six and seven o'clock at night, right? So it's a lot of trying to back play and trying to do both jobs efficiently. What they're thinking is that's how we're gonna grow it, is growing more of those community connections, getting the kids' interest, showing them what's out there. JPJ has done amazing job this year with getting construction connections and getting those people to come in and express to the kids what's available, job-wise, which then drives our programs.
Got it. And I would, I would add too, you, you need somebody, you need someone tending the ship. The course corrections to CTE should not be happening, we should not just look one day and say, oh no. We have an entire program that is under-enrolled with nobody in it. We should be making those decisions year over year, where we look at these skills gaps. And we look and we say, oh, if, if next year, construction is the second biggest line instead of the first, we need to start considering that, hey, maybe two years down the road, we might not have the ability to run a full construction program. So we should be making those adjustments every year, that hasn't been happening. So the last four or five years, stuff has just kind of been status quo, going in the same direction. And we, we need that maintenance of it, to make sure that we are adjusting a little bit here and there. Adding, reducing classes, changing stuff in line with student interest, skills gap, so that we don't end up in a spot where we would look and say this entire program is under-enrolled, and we can't get kids that want to take it, and I would notice.
With such high with such high interest in a CTE track, right, seventy percent. Do we do like, even at least just like an annual survey to students? Even if it's just like a sheet that has the sixteen different, just to be like, hey, like, label them, label your top three. You know, that you'd like, just, it, it would help us, and it could be like halfway through the year, or, you know, like a few months before your April eight, April fifteenth deadline. Just to make sure that like, are we at least like, hey, you know, you know, the numbers don't exactly match out, but hey, we're on the right track by continuing to offer construction. Like, some of these kids in this one will probably still select construction, but something along those lines could be.
We, we need to do a better job of that, I know at Crossroads, I know at the high school, they do that as part of High School and Beyond. So they will, they'll talk about those things, and I know that that has been a conversation that has been had about increasing that, but we should be taking into account student voice in this. That was our big qualm with this report overall, and we, we got it back, we're like, oh, there's not a lot of student voice in this, and that is a, that's a big miss for this type of review, that we don't have more of that. And it's something that moving forward will be a priority to ensure that student yes is driving, but that, that is a good.
Yeah, I mean, just the last thing that we want is to invest, you know, bringing in a excellent health science, you know, CTE leader. And investing in all those materials and stuff, and expecting it to come back from funding and everything, and three students want to take it, but it's like, but it's the highest, it's, it's what most people are looking for, and the students are like, I don't care, I don't want it.
That's, I mean, that, that is the challenge, is trying to find what we can provide that hits the skills gap, that students are interested in, that we have a teacher to do it, that wants to teach it, and, you know, that, all that stuff combined together, it's very difficult.
Yeah, and then the, uh, the, the last thing that I had too was, so recommending, you know, part-time CTE director. Is the recommendation for part-time be just because of the size of the district? Like, would we eventually see the need for a full-time CTE director? Or is it just like we would always, we would ideally have somebody, somebody like yourself that is a CTE instructor, but also plays role, you know, on top as a CTE part-time director as well, like, would that be the long-term?
I don't know if I'm the one to comment.
We have had in the past a full-time CTE.
We have, I'm just wondering if this is.
System, I would say systems are like size, maybe even a little bit bigger, is somebody part-time. And it's often somebody who's in a role of teaching part-day, and then a couple of periods dedicated to being the oversight, and then probably like, you know, a stipend for all the extra things, right? There's a lot of night things and those kind of things, so that's what I've seen. I mean, if you look at some of the districts around us, and they clearly said that when, when we talked to them, and this is, gosh, for your system, you don't need a whole person. But you do need someone who can, could spend that time and build those relationships and, and all those things. And, and the CTE experience, like, has, has lived the dream, right? Like, you get what it means to do, to do this work.
Yeah, I just didn't know if it was, if that was a short-term solution, or if that's like, ideally, we would find, you know, the person that would have that role would be here. Yes, we don't want six directors in seven years. We want somebody that's gonna be here for the long haul, and they will just continually hold a part-time role for that, unless it became burdensome. And then maybe years down the road, we could evaluate it full-time.
I've seen, I mean, I think like that six, that's, six thousand FTE, seven thousand is where it starts to be kind of that one point O. When I was in Canvas, we were right around that seventy-five, and it really was a whole person, and we dedicated that, but with that extreme focus. JPJ, could you talk a little bit about, I can't remember if it said in the, in the report, or if it was just somebody kind of shared with us. Seventy percent of our graduates on a CTE pathway. Is that, is that consistent, is that, is that higher than most districts are, are sized for the, you know, how does, how does that play out in comparison?
Well, I don't think they put it in the report, but I remember as we discussed it, that, that is a high utilization of CTE as a graduation pathway comparative to local districts. So it's, it's definitely higher than what we have seen in other similarly-sized
And so kids could choose a CTE pathway and also be SBA passers, or it could be someone in the love? Or how's that work? Like, talk to the board about that.
Well, the, using it as a graduation pathway, the OSPI guidelines for that, it's two courses. Sequential, not necessarily sequential, that leads to a industry-recognized credential, leads to a, what was the other one, Canvas? It's IRC, two courses in the same kind of pathway of content area, so that, that will allow the student to use that as a graduation pathway beyond that.
Yeah, so they just have to, they take the two courses, so let's give this example, JPJ's got construction one, construction two, one, and they get OSHA tensor. So it's a certification they can take to leave. So it's just, that's the big part that makes it that, I think that's the reason why we've had a really high rate of CTE pathway contributors, because it's two courses back-to-back, and we want to keep those, but we also want to also encourage the other pathway. Right, whether it's SBA or ASAP or different ways. We had the largest portion of our graduation pathways between the two schools was at Crossroads. So now, when we, but we were creating some pathways, so, and we were having some local pathways. So now that we're gonna just use our actual, one of the sixteen graduation pathways. We'll have a little bit more fidelity in that they'll graduate with industry-recognized credentials that actually can take a job.
Okay, and then Dana, is there, is there a bifurcation at some point where students have to make a choice of I'm gonna go down the CADR path, right, the college academic distribution requirements path? I had to double-check, make sure I got that right. So the CADR path for four-year universities and stuff like that, so is there a choice that a student has to make of like, I can either go the CTE route, or I can go the CADR route? Or is a student able to still graduate on a CTE path while still obtaining all the CADR requirements?
So, and, and please jump in here, Robin, if you, if you have some information on that. So High School and Beyond plant, right, kind of guides that work, and that's what we talk about and have, you know, setting that up, but which also want to pigeonhole a kid, right? And, and I think that, I think, if I think globally about Grand Rapids, knowing that seventy percent, I think you said that was, that was high, is kind of some hopes and dreams for kids that they might not even know exist out there, right? And, and so never, never saying, gosh, it's only gonna be this, when maybe they could, right? So Candace.
Cross-crediting, this is the, this is one I worked on really hard this year, and making sure that all of our courses are cross-credited with stated equivalencies, if possible. Which means that they could take a science class, and it be actually available biology on their transcripts, which keeps them on track in the college route, but they're needing to do the CTE pathway. We have several of them that are math, science, and English, and so that gives them the availability to do both. And so right now, all our courses at the high school, except for one, are cross-credited with either Everett Community College, or through the Pacific Northwest Consortium. Which allows them credit through admins in different schools around the area. Which then they can take those transcripts and take those to go forward to college. And already start college, my own personal child did, started Western with fifteen credits of CTE. So it gives them that opportunity to do both.
Okay, well, yeah, and I just think about that because of the, the guaranteed admissions program as well too, and just thinking of students being able to say like, hey, I'm really interested in healthcare, health science, I want to go down the CTE path, but I still want to be qualified, you know, for this guaranteed admissions program, and I want to go to Western, or I want to go to, you know, wherever that would, that, you know, it, it kind of just opens up, keeps, keeps those doors open, because, you know, a student, I mean, we've all been young before, right? Your mind changes from time to time, and you may really want to be a nurse or a doctor when you're a junior. And then by the time you're a senior, you're like, actually, I kind of like architecture, and I really don't want to be really don't want to be pigeonholed there, so, yeah, just sort of, as long as, again, it's, you know, I, I see this with kids. I struggled with this when I was going through high school as well too, which is like, you know, you get into the last, the worst-case scenarios, you get into your senior year, second semester, and you realize, oh, this is actually the path I want to take, and there's no way for me to get to that, right? It's too late, and so it's setting our students up for success as early as possible with as much flexibility through their high school career as possible.
And the good thing is they're starting to move some of that high school, and then down into eighth grade, so they're, they're, as eighth graders, they're, they're starting to think about this stuff, and if we can give them good examples and good options of what their pathways are, and what things can lead to what. The good thing about CTE courses is there, it, it can be a pretty wide cast of a net. When you say, hey, you're gonna go to construction and take construction courses, it's, it's more than just swinging a hammer, right? We we can get them really headed in a great direction for them to make that informed decision when they do get to the next stage. And that, I think, is a vision for CTE and what we do when we equip kids. Um, there's a lot to that that we can do better. And there's a lot to that that we can really flesh out to say, we're providing good opportunities for kids to make informed decisions. Um, here's a bunch of different things you can try. And those, those funnels get smaller, they, they start really wide, get kids to try stuff out and then we're slowly, uh, progressively. Through a sequence of courses, getting them into a fit that is really good for whatever that next step is.
Well, a couple of other questions, Bill, not, um, again, just trying to understand, so, um. Who makes the, the final, the final decision on classes that are taught? Or what CTE classes are going to be taught and how they align with pathways? Just for, for example, I just love saying animal husbandry. Let's say animal husbandry, right? Uh, a teacher really wants to teach it, um, and. Who makes the call of yes, let's offer that or no, that there's a dead end at the middle school that doesn't align with pathways or who makes that? Is it the CTE director's principal? Is it the superintendent? Who makes that call?
That's a great question because that's kind of something that we're figuring out this year, you know, I mean, that's, that is the work of the day.
Yeah.
Because I don't, I don't know how it's happened in the past, but I think that's why we have some of the starts, the stops and starts that we have. So right now, in working with our, uh, right now, of course, we had a little bit of reductions that happened to be in CT, so. That's what our secondary administrators are coming together and master schedules and what does this look like? And then. With the experts in the room, the CTE experts in the room of yes, that's a pathway and that still works and 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 we can do it. So. And and your question is an excellent one because that's what has to be formalized in our system because. We'll speak about what's happened in the past, but it maybe has been a harder, like, oh, how are we gonna do this? Or felt like we were pivoting a lot and there was a lot of pathways and. As you saw in the report, many of them weren't OSPI-approved or we didn't have all of our ducks in a row. So. It's formalizing that, developing, here's the pathways we're gonna do and then. Every year analyzing what is, what are the skills gaps in in Stonewash County and how do we do that? And do we have the right staff on hand to do that?
So stated with my board handle, and the board handles policy, so is that an area where we need to create a policy that defines what that looks like? Or how do you, how, how is that done in other districts?
It backed, go ahead, it's backed up though, right? I mean, that's.
I can speak to that. So what usually is, is the CTE director works really closely with the Director of Teaching and Learning. And the principals and it's kind of the CTE director should be the face for looking at. The, the big picture of what is needed in our area. Then they talk with the principals about the desire and what the kids, so going back to, um, what Peter said was, what's their, what's their. Evaluating every year and then they bring it to the Director of Teaching and Learning and the Superintendent. So they surely did make some very hard decisions to. Bring down some of the stuff I brought to, um, uh, Dana and Emily. What would, what would be, um, classes that we were having now consisted pathways, which is what we didn't have. We needed to have some alignment. And then we sat at the table and then brought it to the principals. Cause ultimately, at the end of the day, we have to make sure we're compliant with OSPI and we, we weren't complying in quite a few areas. So. It's kind of this whole group effort that the CTE director should be aligned with pulling that info, information, anything that we're needing to, um.
And there is RCW and administrative code that kinda guides some of this stuff as well. Um, that kind of puts some standards in place for how it should work, um, and that, that is stuff that we really do need to. Improve on our collaboration in that so that it's not, it's not a single person's decision. Um, it is a group decision. Driven by advisories, driven by a number of different things.
Uh, do we still have pathway dead ends? Um, one of the things I heard. A couple of years ago was that like there would be a student maybe at the middle school or some student interested in. One of the pathways, I think, some of the high schools, it was dead, wasn't offered, it was, it was. Yeah, those types of things. Is that something that we're still struggling with?
We do not have that anymore.
Longer after this year, that is the hard, that is the hard work that we have been working on. I could not have done this without JBJ this whole year. But that is what we have done. We have made it so we have four solid pathways in the district. And, um, they all lead to in ensuring that we have competitors and that there are classes from middle school to high school.
Got it, okay. Um, last question, just as I was looking at the numbers. Um, one of the things that jumped out to me, uh, was that, um, Stanwood. Uh, Stanwood, every single kid is, um, actually more than their complete enrollment is a CTE student. Hundred and over a hundred percent. How do they do that? And why aren't we doing that?
I can answer that and, um, it is because they put programs in, um, place of the middle school. That makes it so that every kid takes it. So I'm coming from a, a small district that this would be a great idea going forward. And it is something that we've talked about, that every seventh grade took digital media. It's a class where they learn to type, they learn to just do all the basics, resumes, they learn how to. Put emails out, do all of that stuff. Um, what it allowed is it filled the High School Beyond Plan for starting seventh grade because they knew it was coming out. That is a way to get it so that every student has been at CTE. So it is bringing those courses that. Meet STEM from middle school that could also do that. Uh, right now, we're just trying to right the ship with the members, but. Big picture plan, that is one of the things we've talked about, is bringing some of the courses in that could give kids. At a younger age, a taste of CT that gives them opportunities to see what's available later on.
Got it. Um, last question, just, um, so I guess how are we handling? In, as we're setting this up, I absolutely support having a part-time CD director. I'm, I'm, I'm actually, we, we probably should have it now. Um, so a hundred percent support, but how are we handling the financial side of it? And specifically, I don't necessarily mean, you know, paying for that person. I mean, um. It like in, you know, let's say we have a pathway that works really well, um, we've decided, but. You know, when you get to buildings that are older like Crossroads, for example, right, that, you know, is. Maybe using hot plates and, you know, like, how are we going to handle upgrading structures so that? Um, these pathways are available to all of our students, even our Crossroads students?
It's a great question.
Every time you say that, it makes me so happy.
It is, it's a really good question because it's, it's actually, I mean, it's something that. We should probably like, I don't know, take Robin out to dinner and be like, I'm so sorry that you have had to cook on hot plates. Um, because that's also not the industry, right? There's no restaurant that's, that I know of that's cooking on hot plates, so that doesn't make any sense. And, you know, the elephant in the room is that, you know, Crossroads and has had a lot of pathways and that's really hard to navigate. If you can, we're a small system, we can only do so many. And I think that they spoke to this in the, um, when you talked with the. The reviewers, I think they talked about, cause we, we specifically said, gosh. An ALE environment, do they have all of, is this typical? And talk to me about what they kinda, what kinda feedback they gave. I think it's actually in the report.
Uh, talks about a couple places. We've, we've had this conversation, um, with a number of other CT directors in, uh, the area and other sized districts that are both. Bigger and well-resourced than us and smaller districts that, um, you know, the challenge of ALE and CT and how you combine them together and. Uh, the challenge is, is that the ALE model doesn't mesh well with CT program standards. So the state. Standards for what OSPI says CT program should be, um, it's hard to mesh that well with. Oh, with an ALE model, um, and the biggest reason for that is usually the funding model that is present or not present. When you try to run a CT program in an ALE model, you don't get that CTE-enhanced funding when you run it as an ALE. Um, CTE requires enhanced funding for us to do the stuff that we do, for me to build, um. Plantar boxes with my kids in the high school shop. I need extra money, that is not BEA money. I need. I need enhanced funding and if I don't have that, then I am disadvantaged in what I am doing. Uh, so CT thrives on that advanced or that enhanced funding, um. ALE doesn't allow that ability for us to claim that enhanced funding. And so that's a detriment to the school, it's a detriment to the teachers and ultimately it's a detriment to the kids that they don't get that same experience because they haven't been able to. Run that enhanced type of program. So that's, that's the big challenge when we talk to other districts. Um, most ALEs are very focused. There is one, right? Business or something that could be run that doesn't require as much. Materials and resources, um, that, that's the challenge in, in most cases.
Is it potentially also, uh, just like a logistical solution in terms of like busing, right? Like. Students that want to partake in culinary, we know the culinary is always fourth period. You know, over at the high school and that is just a course that, cause then maybe I'm. Simplifying it too much, but then that increases the enrollment over there, strengthens that program. These students get that exact same experience that the high school students are getting. We just have to figure out the logistics of actually like busing.
Right, and and I don't think you can recreate everything at a, at a smaller, a smaller school, that you're, it's not a substance of high school, right? And the focus and and to your point that the, just they share equipment, if you think about a shop, you think about. Hot plates, right? Or ovens or those kind of things. So you can't craft, you can't create everything and defining yourself as an ALE. And it is the reason that sometimes, uh, I won't use the term ALE anymore, a choice school. Um, why they go five days a week and you get the full funding and then you can run a couple of things and. Being four days a week, that's kind of the, that's kind of the kicker, right? And the, and the reason that you can't get the CTE funding is, is you have to go those five days a week and they need the hours. All of the pieces, so. And many school districts have the benefit of having their, their alternative program or their choice program or whatever. In some proximity to the high school, so you can take a couple of classes or those kind of, we're a little bit across town, which makes it much more difficult.
Yeah, it, it does, but I mean, you know, luckily it's, it's still a small enough district where, you know, it is, it's a. Five-minute bus ride over there versus, you know, where it's not, there's not one choice school with. Three high schools and, you know, they're twenty minutes away from each other. So it could be something that, so long as there's no like. Uh, there's no details I'm missing around like, well, because they're, you know, a crossroad student, like those credits. Would be difficult to train. I don't know if that's just like some.
Right, and that's, and that's part of it, uh, uh, shoring up what we have, right? That's part of the, that's been done is just a couple pathways and make it simpler, right?
Yeah.
Um, so I, I, uh, thank you for that, that explanation. I guess my, my concern is, is that. We don't know, right? We don't know where a student, uh, their destination is going to be. So let's say they get super fired up about. Um, a pathway or something in middle school and they choice to Crossroads and now that's not offered there, right? That's not necessarily fair to that student. We aren't doing them a lot of favors. Um, so, um. Also, I think while we absolutely should allocate some money for a, uh, part-time CTE director, I think. The reality is, is that we all need to be okay and allocate money to make the buildings that we have conducive. To the pathways that we think and, and obviously we can't make that decision or solve that here, but. It's going to cost money, right? And, and if we just invest in a CTE director. I, we're only halfway there, right? And we're going to be robbing some students of. Uh, the full realization of whatever it is they're passionate about, right? And so, um, I guess I just wanna make sure that doesn't get lost in the sauce.
A good CTE director is gonna give us money. A very, a good CTE director is gonna be advocating, finding, tracking down grants, finding community partners. I will just say that.
Yeah, we had, when I was in a previous system, we had a CTE audit, I think it was a national, like federal, like it was, it was just kind of a big deal. And I'll never forget in the interview process, um, the person that was doing the audit said, you know. Um, the beautiful thing about CTE is the research is so clear on, on students with disabilities and students who are unhoused. Um, the success they have in CTE. And I, I, that's always resonated with me, like, we need to keep them in spaces like a comprehensive high school where you really have, really, really are able to do the rich CTE work. And, and offer those things because. Um, she said, you know, like for, for our students who are unhoused and like homework is difficult or access to wifi is difficult, like. That hands-on stuff that they could be doing in a manufacturing shop or, or whatever, not a hot plate, beautiful kitchen, right? Like, it matters. It might be their only exposure to something like that, that they wanna go do long-term. Um, and so it's always, and, and the students with disabilities as well, and, well, you know, reading might be difficult or all of those other pieces that hands-on CTE, rich experience. Might show them a pathway in a way, a way to graduation, a way to something after, life after high school and those post-secondary things that we want for our kids. And so. I think that that's something we need to think about is what can we do? How can we grow it? How can we make it bigger and those, those components? Cause we're, we are losing a number of kids to Snow Isle and how we gain some of those kids back, keeping them here, keeping our FTE here so that we don't have the reduction, so that we're doing. Doing our things right hand around it.
Last thing I promised, so I guess, um, actually I don't promise. Uh, what, again, keeping things at the board at the policy level. I, I think it's safe to assume that we're all very passionate about this for a number of reasons, like what, where are we missing if a policy standpoint, where we as a board can create policies to support this? So twenty years from now, when we're all off of here, that this program is still viable and it's important. And you don't have to answer that now, but I, I guess that, that, that's one of the things that also I'd like to kind of know because. I think that's, that's, that's where we're effective is that.
But I think we invested in, in a review, right? And paying attention to the recommendations, so there's nothing worse than you can do. Besides not having a review, but then having a review and then going, yeah, okay, thanks for your input and we're not gonna do it. I think everything in there is doable and, and we have the resources right here to, to do that and, and the people quite frankly, right, to do that as well. So. I think it's adhering to that and then some, some follow-ups like wrap back around, you know, have we wrapped? In a, in a year, can we wrap back around to this Wassa review and go? Wow, these recommendations, we've just ticked off seven of them and we're still working on these past, on these, that's something that the board could ask for, like. I'd like a, a follow-up report or I'm thinking about the, the Wassa report for special education. What's the wraparound on that, you know, and how are we doing? Yes, we're doing better, we absolutely are, but we wanna celebrate those successes too. You know, it's, sometimes we call out the issues and things at board meetings, but it's, there's also a time for us to say, we had some really good success here too.
Yeah.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you for standing for so long.
Yeah. All right, moving to item five eight, item floor. We hit Dan there, okay. Um, item six eight, you business. Uh, resolution twenty-four dash twenty-five slash zero six, whether they're wrong, I don't care, capital projects budget extension.
Uh, this is just to give our capital projects fund enough capacity, should we get the grant to do, uh. The significant HVAC upgrades, we put in for a four-point-five million dollar grant. Um, for districts our size, uh, there's twenty-two million dollars available. For districts under three thousand students that can demonstrate need based on, um, antiquated and inefficient systems. Um, and we, we, we needed some significant partnerships with, um, Honeywell. To get some pretty detailed reports out to OSPI about what our needs are. And we're very hopeful to hear about that this week, but we needed to have, build in the capacity to capital projects that if we get the revenue, we can spend it.
Right.
Okay.
Make a motion that we approve resolution twenty-four twenty-five dash oh six, capital projects budget extension. Second.
Motion has been made, seconded all in favor? Moving on to item number seven, unfinished business. Uh, is, uh, seven eight, excuse me, second reading to amend policy thirty-one forty-two, admission. Of a non-immigrant J dash one and F dash one exchange students, uh, the foreign exchange student.
Yeah, so, um, we're limiting this to two, I believe you said, right?
Yes, I believe so. I, I think it actually was the percentage of district pop, of our district population.
Yeah, and is that the one thing I'm about to ask during the first reading, does that, is that? Two at the high school and two at the Crossroads or is it two total?
I think that's why it's a percent. Can we look at that board policy? Thank you, Dan.
I can.
The one, it's on the board agenda.
I don't think it's in the policy, maybe it's in the procedure.
No, it's policy manual section three thousand as well.
Yeah, but it doesn't list out.
It doesn't list out, yes.
Um, it says one percent of total student population under, um, the procedure.
Okay.
I typically read procedures, so I guess that's why I didn't see it.
It says the district may consider the Council on Standards for International Education travel suggestion that schools work toward. A goal of one percent of the total student population being comprised of exchange students.
Got it.
Um, well, that answers that question, so it's, it's a cumulative thing. I, I don't have any evidence.
Okay. Any more discussion?
We'll make a motion that we approve the second reading to amend policy three-one four-two, admission of non-immigrant J one and F one exchange students, the foreign exchange students.
Second.
Motion has been made a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that moves us on to the consent agenda. It doesn't look like there is any additions. Is there any discussion? Okay, so it passes with unanimous consent and the time is seven-thirty on the dot. And the time is seven-thirty on the dot. Amazing. That is amazing.